We're doing.
People down.
Just saying, I'm gonna be up and talking to the neighbors, you know, and just tell all these guys. It's yeah, that's right.
Well.
Very, very depending on.
That.
Yeah.
One time.
Yeah. Oh, over here is what's second. Such a. She used to be able to run them. Always really.
Yeah, two more there. Online.
Definitely reality. And I'm the next one of this like this. Good idea. You know, absolutely. If you're looking at anyone or not. Do engineering. There's a lot. Which I don't know. Three years. Considering it's all.
This year.
I know it's gonna happen. If you've had. Everybody. This state is simply. The only problem. I had my own bigger. Yeah, all the way there. Yeah. Sometimes.
Problem is.
A little bit. With security. We go down. Right. They do though. And he likes. Their job is like. Yeah. He killed her second. Just. Be up under a roadie or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I put up a little fence and I didn't wanna dig out. I do. So he was like, well. If you're hoping all the things. I've seen him by. My forehead. He's on. But I think if I wanted to say. Probably. So somebody dug it out at some. Yeah. People. Right. Sorry. There. Might have been there before, but so that's maybe a lot of noise.
Welcome, uh, CSU Southern planning commission meeting for Tuesday, June twenty twenty three. All rise to the. Yes.
I believe the relations. Of the United States. Wish to dance.
Do we have any media here tonight? Uh, the new planning commission member.
John Van Dujie.
At the we finally got one recruited. So one um. We have John Van Dujie joining you guys now. Introduce yourself to everyone and just give a little brief background.
Um, John Van Dujie, uh, I've been in South one for uh ten years now, but I've always lived in the area. Merrill Creek, Roseburg. And uh live at Fairway Estates. Um, the golf course up there. And um my background basically is I worked at Old Ford Products Particle Work Plant for thirty eight and a half years to technical director there. And uh it was a wonderful job. I loved it. The plant's all torn down. Now there's no more, nothing there anymore. No, I'm looking forward to to serving.
And also we want to do um community development. So Brandy is now joining us, so we'll get familiar face. We come to the office and we're at meetings.
Welcome.
Two new ones.
Two new people tonight.
Yeah.
A good night. Okay, uh, the approval of the uh match for. On May sixteenth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting, as everyone read. I'm not gonna approve that. My second motion. Is.
Um. Mr. Van Dujie.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Maloney.
Hi.
Mr. Hoxsey.
Hi.
Richard Sarnoski.
That.
And Charity.
I.
The minutes have been approved. And file. Okay, um, I have a little notice here. I have to read because of the. What was that coming up in that? There's a uh, quote their statement. All persons testifying probably being parties to the application and must provide their name and full mail and address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. Plus, public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to proposed land use action. Anyone wishing to be considered as a party to this matter must raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to its city zoning code, providing specific applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of that are in ci- city staff report. For the adhering body and parties to be to the hearing and opportunity to respond to an issue concludes appeals to the city council or land use board or to seek damages in certain court due to conditions of approval. If there are uh places I have public hearing, the open hearing to the public um offer declarations of any conflicts of interest site, financial, induced, any exportation contact or personal biases in this matter. Right here.
Mike, this is.
Um, yeah, I I live on Earth. Avenue, but it's not part I live on. It's not gonna be affected. They're gonna be doing a different route. My role. Okay, that'd be all right.
So just make confirm that there's no one that challenges his ability to make the honest decision.
There were no challenges. You um plan commission meeting. The impartial. Okay. Jane.
Oh. So party status. So at the time of the mailing of the staff reports, um, we had Dr. He talked with Douglas County Public Works have wrote in. Uh, Brandon McGar, Division Chief from the Fire Department, Aaron Swan, kind of a work director for the city of Southern. Um, David Roll and Cassandra Roll, um, were also one of party status along with Vinita Ames. Since the mailing of the staff report, uh, we did receive um an email uh away with some objections um and concerns as well. And then if anyone in the audience wants to become party status, they can do so now. Just haven't saved them and the rest of it's on.
You just state your name and address at this time.
Uh, Nathan Miller. And that or so we live in. Is that what you want?
Yes, sir. Got it.
Okay, so six zero seven Oak Street. Oak.
Thank you. At the time. Okay, uh, anybody else? State your name and address.
Captain Quaznoy. And I live at seven oh four E six three.
Seven four five.
Seven four five. Walk ahead.
Anyone else? And one. Two more. You vote for him.
Scott Hari thirteen eighty seven E six avenue.
Thank you.
Tricksey Diamond, you buy zero art chat.
Thank you.
Right.
Anyone else? One more in back.
There he is. Chambers, uh, seven thirty nine E six avenue.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Benny.
So I'm gonna submit to the record and the staff reports with the nine exhibits that were enough for those into the record. Let's start. I'm gonna get it.
Yeah, we're kind of. There you go.
For the state. Sorry. So the applicant for every reinforced management, uh, see if they're requesting a conditional use permits along with a tree falling permit from greater than five acres. The subject properties will be marked on the sixth avenue with the city of Southern. The tree fall permit on property greater than five acres is a conditionally permitted use as outlined in chapter five point one six of the Southern municipal code. The subject property is described as tax lots four hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred in section sixteen B and part of tax lot one hundred in section seventeen A, all in County twenty five, South Range, five West. The property says named low density hillside by some comprehensive plan and zone are each residential hillside by the Southern Development Code. Um, during this public hearing, the planning commission will accept public testimony and make a decision on the application after the hearing. The application is being processed as a type three procedural for a conditional use permit subject to applicable criteria of chapter five point sixteen of the Southern Municipal Code. As part of the hearing, the planning commission will review the applicant's request for complete compliance with applicable criteria, render decision on the matter. So the request was filed with the city on May twenty four, twenty twenty three and being complained May thirty first, twenty twenty three. Notice of the public hearing, the conditional use permit and tree falling permit applications. What for the planning commission were given in accordance with section four point two point one four oh point C as a type three procedure. Notice was sent to affected property owner to record one hundred feet of subject property. Property owners affected by this decision, service providers and governmental agencies on May thirty first, twenty twenty three. Um. And so then you guys all received the staff reports. So we just saw the applicable criteria throughout um staff report regarding chapter five point one six of municipal code and also uh four point five of the Southern Development Code. So if you have any questions regarding the findings throughout that, um, let me know or else I'm just gonna give to the actual credit that kind of addresses the criteria, those conditions that we feel um place on this application. Um, so based on applicant's findings, the city staff report and the testimony evidence provided during the public hearing, the planning committee can choose a post the public here and you move to either one, approve the requested conditional use permit and tree fall and permit greater than five acres on the subject property address zero E six avenue based upon the findings of the staff report and or testimony brought forward through the public hearing process, which recognize that approval criteria can be met at this time, subject to the following conditions. And yes, I'm gonna read them all to you. So Southern Public Works Director shall provide video documentation of the proposed haul route prior to the start of the proposed timber harvesting. The property owner responsible party shall notify Southern Public Works Director when the proposed timber harvesting is complete. Once the timber harvest is complete, Southern Public Works Director will reevaluate by additional video footage along with visual inspection, the haul route and affected city streets. Video footage shall include the city's own water line and access easement as outlined in deed reference number nine in seventy one dash one zero six eight two. The property owner responsible party is responsible for any damages that may occur to existing gravel road, which is the city's southern easement and shall repair gravel road to beginning condition. The property owner responsible party shall conform to chapter eight point one six point one seven zero, the noise disturbance and phone municipal code. The hours of operation in residential districts is permitted between the hours of seven AM and six PM. Property owner responsible party shall submit a geotechnical report prior to the start of proposed timber harvest, meeting their requirements in section two point seven point one zero zero of the Southern Development Code. Property owner responsible party shall submit a stamp certification by a licensed engineer stating that the rate of stormwater drainage during and after the harvesting of timber will not increase as a result of the proposed improvement. The certification shall further state that the property owner responsible party will adhere to all applicable storm drainage, grading, erosion, and sediment control requirements. The statement will also say that there will be no impact to neighboring properties. Property owner responsible party must submit an approved permit from the Oregon Department of Forestry. The property owner responsible party shall comply with the Forest Practices Act. The property owner responsible party is responsible and planning for a reinforcement of the subject property, meeting the requirements within section five point one six point zero seven zero point eight of the Southern Municipal Code. Minimum of two hundred and fifty trees planted per acre within one year. After twelve month period, the property owner responsible party of inventory and submit documentation, a minimum of seventy five percent survival rate. All degree and slash realized of the term in the municipal code from the tree falling shall be either removed or piled and burned within sixty days on the removal of the harvested trees unless a time extension is granted by the planning commission due to unusual or extenuating circumstances. However, such time extension shall not exceed a maximum of twelve months from the date of the completed harvest. Property owner responsible party shall submit documentation com- within compliance of this requirement. Property owner responsible party shall must submit a twenty four seven emergency contact information document project management onsite provided by Southern Fire Department. Property owner responsible party is required to follow all rules from the EFPA, the Notice Force Protective Association during fire season. The property owner responsible party is advised by Southern Public Works Director the potential risk of utilizing the existing gravel road for the haul route as described in the application submitted. The property owner responsible party is advised to explore alternate routes that don't put the city's water line at risk of being damaged. If the existing gravel road is utilized as the haul route, the property owner responsible party is to notify the public works director within twenty four hours that damage occur and is responsible for repair of the damaged water line. Uh, obtain a city's home overweight truck on permit that is to be approved pursuant to um, chapter ten point three two point zero three zero, Southern Municipal Code. Obtain the necessary planning class worksheet approval from the community development department. Once the above conditions have been met, authorize the proposed timber harvesting. Few advisory conditions. The property owner responsible party shall not negatively impact adjacent progress storm damage, swell, erosion, and or water runouts. The property owner responsible party shall comply with all applicable local county, state, and federal regulations as applicable to the tree fall. Um, so the next action alternative would be number two. Approve the requested conditional use permit and tree falling permit greater than five acres on the subject property address at zero E six avenue with modifications and or conditions of approval based on findings of fact and or testimony brought forward through the public hearing, which recognize that approval criteria can be met at this time. Number three, continue the public hearing to a specific specified date and time or to close the public hearing to leave the record open to a specified date and time for seminal of additional evidence and rebuttal. Or number four denies the requested conditional use permit and free calling permit for greater than five acres on the subject property based on findings of facts and or testimony brought forward through the public hearing on the grounds that the proposal does not satisfy the applicable approval criteria. Um, so staff recommendation is city staff recommends that the planning commission select action alternative number one and approve the requested conditional use permit and tree falling permit greater than five acres as outlined in this application, subject to the conditions listed above on the subject property addresses here at E six avenue. Good night.
Good night now. Okay, call for the applicants uh before. Yeah, looking here. Somebody back in the back. Yeah. Please speak your name and your address.
Uh, Grant DeMaris, the need of Oregon. West U G. I'm a consultant for the landlord. And landlord's nephew is here all. He's ninety years old, so he couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Staff, I want to thank you. This is my time to make comments on the finding to.
Your report. What are you trying to do?
Okay. I don't have a copy. I didn't bring that with me, but I thought I submitted it to the different copy of our report.
Yeah, so but you can just give your testimony as far as, you know, what you're proposing.
What you're. Oh, okay, you do. Well, our proposal was submitted. Yeah, it's in the record. Uh, it was pretty lengthy, so I don't.
No, you're not gonna read the whole thing, but I mean, just overview of what you're doing.
Yeah. On the object, the 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 proposal, I said, as a customer speaks for itself, we wanna get up there. We wanna do some timber harvesting. It will allow us to see the property, the topography and uh plan is after the timber harvest, a selected timber harvest to um develop the property. The the seventy acre parcel would also look like this down the road, talking to the city about the next thing, the 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 land next to it also that that can be, that's not in this proposal. So the process, the process would be that location is to command, get the timber harvested, open an area up and then submit a development plan after we've had a chance to see the photography and the views and and everything that uh that's submitted in the report. I've had a chance to review the uh staff recommendations and uh and their uh recommendation. I'd like to just make a few comments as far as the action alternatives. Um, which their one A, which they recommend who we actually are find with approval with uh item number one on the conditional use permit. Item number two two were okay, but as responsible to big one to the noise disturbance and hours of operation. Uh, we agree with that. The property owner responsible has submitted a geotechnical report prior to the start of the timber harvesting. Um, generally, your geotech reports are done as part of the development plan. I mean, we're open to getting a geotech report up there. It wasn't required by the state, but if the city's not required, generally, they like to see uh make those reports that the property has been opened up for so they can see the road construction. Um, but that's it. Wouldn't be opposed to that. Uh, the development plan is stamped certificate by licensed engineer stating the rate of stormwater drainage. The property is that generally your stormwater drainage is dealt with that. Do you get your criteria for your roads, your your curves and gutters and where you're gonna put the homes? So I think it's gonna be pretty hard for a uh, I mean, we can get engineer to talk about stormwater drainage, but our harvesting isn't gonna change the stormwater drainage. Basically, the water's still gonna drain with the water drains. And the road, the roads that are put into the logging will be waterbar to keep the water going in the same direction that it did. So we're actually not changing the drainage plan on the property at all. Um. Number five, this submitted approval committee, the Department of Forestry. Uh, we've done that. It has been submitted to the city. Uh, number six, the property responsible or should comply with Oregon Forest Practices Act. That's once again, that's in the supplemental required by law for us. Formed the fourth practice today. Reforestation, we're fine with what they're requesting there as far as planting. And then one year. If we're gonna develop, we probably wouldn't. We would lock night, lock night, not like to plant, but if the city wants us to, we'll put the reforestation and then if we develop, build roads on site, if there are trees back out, so or leave them in, you know, if it's open as applicable. The slash byline and debris requirements are the recommendations. Uh, I think we're good with all that. Probably gonna have to have an extension, but we get in there and harvest this summer. You obviously can't burn within sixty days, so we'd have to have an extension there to the fall, so we could cover the piles, trap them, but we can't, obviously can't burn until the rain set, so probably looking at a fall burn, which obviously might not be that could be past the sixty days. So we would request that the extension be able to get in there and burn them in the fall when we have rain, wet weather. Uh, item number nine was submitted twenty four hour emergency contact information. That's great. We can do that. No problem. Item number ten, uh, responsible parties require me all the rules from the Kentucky Forest Protection Association during fire season. That's a state requirement, so obviously we would do that or anything else the city asked us to. Um, the Southern Public Works on the potential of the water line coming down you know, Hart Street from the tank. Uh, we would propose doing a locate, either city to do a locate, and we can do a locate, identify where the line is and just stay off it either straddle it or move to one side, so it would not be an issue, so trucks would not be running over there. Would not be trans- transportation would not done over the water line. We just simply to move the road to one side or straddle it. On, and one I take comment, I'd like to make about truck overweight truck haul and prevent all the truck loads will be legal weight. Not nothing will be over eighty thousand pounds and we won't cross in any of the coastal bridges. So I didn't think that was applicable unless city comes up with a reason otherwise. Um, the plan's worksheet for the city having getting that done before we start. We don't have a problem with that either. So the plan is to get up in there, harvest the timber, uh, leave all the pines, leave all the deciduous or certain courses that deciduous grow, open it up and see where the house sites are gonna be and then probably half acre or quarter acre. I know that the the minimum block sizes are a lot smaller than that, but we were thinking about making them bigger because topography up there. So people have maybe a half acre or a quarter acre lot or maybe even an acre depending on the the what the topography.
So this isn't gonna be a fair competition. This is just taking the birds out.
Right, just taking out the and the dung for, uh, we wanna keep all the, I think the plants to keep all the, all their pine. Wonderosa pine and then whatever hardwoods are for aesthetics. And then once that's done, we get a good total map, uh, topography, do an aerial shot, figure out what it is, then we would submit a development plan accordingly. It's a little confusing because normally a tree harvesting permit is not tied to a development permit. I've I've never I've never worked in a municipality or or energy that that has that, so it's a little it it's kind of a development plan generally follows a uh layer. But we don't have any problem with addressing any of these conditions. Just those two uh the two ones I talked about, the geotech and engineering study, that's generally done before you do development, do do many earth moving or building, construct the roads or or the gutter or any of that type of stuff, so. I'm open for any other question.
Okay, do you have any questions? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
They've now received any testimony from proponents of the development? They've now received any testimony from proponents of the development? I haven't seen no hands.
We don't understand.
We don't understand the question.
Okay, then we'll receive testimony from opponents.
Who wants to go first?
Yes, we know who you are, this time.
Check your point, um excuse me, I'm all new at this, um I just moved into this house. We, me and my wife bought this place almost years ago, and it's at the, the, the Quasimodo. And uh they're, they're already building roads and already uprooted several of my trees coming on my property. And destroying parts of my land already, and I don't understand how, and that you guys can do this. Um but I, I have lots of pictures that I'd love to show, but my, obviously, my phone is dead now. Of course, so I checked, and it's disturbing everything up there and it's it's not good.
Thank you.
So Harri thirteen eighty seven East Sixth Avenue. We have concerns with the said drainage that's supposed to not be issues, but they've all, I have a seasonal creek that runs right through my property. They have already punched a road in and pushed all of this stuff into the creek that is the seasonal runoff that runs right down. Um right through town, and it's in everybody's yard and it's gonna have a big backup. As soon as the rain start to blow, they trespass on properties, they have cut my personal trees down. And pushed their trees down onto my property. We're worried about wildlife that's going to come off the mountain and be into the residential areas right there. And see. I think that's my main concern right there, so we have to, thank you.
Next.
Sixty nine, yeah, we want our job new. I'm playing forester and actually specializing in logging and stuff, so what I'm concerned about, um well, a few things, one is a dust abatement for those homes, so you come down the water tower road and you go on the pavement. Those houses that are right there are gonna get completely covered with dust. So I wanna know what you're gonna put into your mitigation measures to protect um those homes from that. Um also, I, has anybody actually driven Arch Avenue? Okay, so what, and this happened last time I was here with Arch Avenue, it's not that far. You know, just to take a little trip, just so you have eyes on it, you guys should all have just driven through, just so you know. So you're coming down the water tower road and you hit arch, you can't even see. You know, when I approach a car, like, like sometimes you're very careful, someone's going too fast. You could go with a ditch, but there's ditches on both sides, and a couple spots, there's driveways you can pull apart, so there's fruit trees on the homeowners. Uh have on that east side of that corner, are you gonna make sure those get cut? So people could see the traffic coming through there? Are those kind of mitigation measures you're gonna make, the mailboxes that are there? That, the road isn't wide enough for a low boy and log trucks to get through without doing some work. Um to make it safer, so there are children that live in that corner. Um so I, I really think there's something that you guys really need to look at and put some mitigation measures um on the whole route if that's what you're gonna use, because as it is right now, just if I come across anybody going down arch, hitting six, going up the speed, like, I'm hugging that corner, and I just have a little car. So what kind of traffic? Signs are you guys gonna be putting up there, um or having them do, it's, it's more than the usual logging job, because that road is really tight. And I'm really, really disappointed that you guys are gonna make a decision and you haven't even seen it. So, so saying that, um the water flow is ridiculous, I mean when you take trees off, that's what sucks up water, so there's the invasion of the water. You can mitigate that, but he doesn't understand that the water flows and change. So I'm, I'm just saying, you can mitigate things, but he doesn't even get that. That really worries me, so I hope you guys get that, and that you guys add conditions is the permit, if you prove it. Look ahead, you guys have the power to add things into the conditional use permit, or whatever you're gonna use. And make, look ahead, especially the water line that is really driving over, you guys can add stuff in there. They're gonna let me drive up there, don't be tampered with my water line. You know, trusting that they're gonna protect it, oh, they had twenty four hours to fix it, okay. There's things you can do ahead of time. So I hope you look ahead, if you're gonna allow us to happen, we put those mitigation measures in that approval process, we're gonna, so. Oh, and then I do really think it's interesting that they're so presumptuous about um going ahead and asking for another permit later. I, I just find that odd that, like, this is a permit for the logging site, and they're already assuming that they're gonna get the permit to develop it. I, I don't know, I just find that a little bit odd to me, but, yes.
Thank you.
Can I step back up with one, something she said? With the development program, or they wanna develop, I understand that, you know, that's good for the city. But are you going to make them develop and not just log it, and then all of a sudden they take that money and run and say, oh, it's not developable?
But it just, I don't think we have any way to make.
Yes, there is not our property that.
But by call, by making it intention, the dice.
I know what you're saying, okay, technically their property, we can't really dictate what they can and can't do with it. But you can give the permits. It would be prudent to, to continue this process, just to, yes, to extract as much value out of the project.
You wanna speak freely, yes.
I live on the Chambers Lot, seven thirty ninety Sixth Avenue, uh just below, just below the, is nice. And they've already begun ruining things before it was even started. They've been up there with their excavators, they've been already interrupting the wildlife, there's um trees down. There's these roads built by this person that said he was just marking property lines. You don't need to dig up a hillside, mark property lines. Um I'm concerned about the wildlife. I, I think nothing should have started, it tells me it must have happened. About four days ago, somebody showed up and started digging around up there. So I'm just, we have these houses, beautiful hill, beautiful trees. And they've already ruined it before anybody even had a chance to say anything.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. I didn't log in earlier, my name's John Bean. John Bean, seven six seven Terrace, uh just my only questions were about the logging, if they're gonna be clear cutting it and the replanning, that replanning process. But then as far as the further development, just something thrown in your guys' head, I already want, run out of water up on the hill there. I gotta get water trucked up to me, I get city water, but you guys can't, not you guys, but the city can't pump it up to me, so I'm already, when they get low on their towers around here, I already run out of water. So if they're gonna start developing houses up above me even, that might be something you guys need to think about in the future, is you're gonna have this, you're gonna have to throw more pumps, more towers. You're gonna have to make big developments in the city for that. I said, I already ran out of water every single year, Marty's my neighbor down below me, he has water pressure problems, so this is something to think about.
Do you go off the tank or you come off the city line?
I come off the tank.
Yeah, I do, it's, that's just I mean, if there's development up there, it's gonna be environment, have city water up there.
It's, yeah, yeah, just on the, throwing your heads up, is if the tank is I can't remember, I've, I've been going back and forth with the city guys forever on this, so if the tank is if the main tank is, I think they said six feet down, then I lose water, that's when I gotta start trucking it in, so just something to think about, if the non-porel pump, if they lose one pump out the non-porel station, I lose water pressure, so just something to think about, something for you guys to think about too, when you start throwing houses, if you wanna throw houses up there, you're gonna need water up there. Gotta get it above you so you get some pressure, just the gravity feed you, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else on that side? Okay, anyone, um neutral comments?
What kind of comments?
You're one side or the other? You're in the middle. Nobody. Okay, the applicant have any rebuttals to what's been said?
Yes, sir. Once again, Greg, I made my name in the record earlier, for reports, man, and it was green management. First off, as far as the equipment's concerned, uh there's been no what we're done up there, other than the opening up of existing roads, which was done, but all, there's been no work done by us. I believe the surveyors up, they're surveying lines, and I believe a survey is required under law to contact any landlord reporting process or does an asthma, there's to take off on their property. And so sometimes surveyors, if they're cutting the line, cut down a sapling, I don't know, they talked about trees, but we haven't, we haven't cut any trees up there, I was just up there the other day, we haven't cut the ownership has cut nothing up there.
We all have.
I have pictures too.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just saying, if it's a, if it's a sapling or something that the surveyor did, that's fine, but we haven't cut any trees. All we've done is open up existing roads, so that's the statement I would like to make. Surveyors have been up there to pretty sophisticated survey job, because of a lot of dogs up and down, back and forth, but I believe if a surveyor, licensed surveyor I know ours does, if he crosses, and that's his property, he's required by law to contact them and let him know, so if that hasn't been done, that's he violated his uh, the surveying code for the state of Oregon. Um as far as water drainage, obviously, if you cut trees, there's gonna be uh additional water drainage, but what I'm saying is the drainage isn't gonna change, the channels aren't gonna change. Whatever's coming off any hill, and how it's coming off that hill will still come the same way, and if there's, if there's um I don't believe there's water coming in anybody's driveways, but if there is, that's a that true wouldn't happen in the summertime, and the forest practice act requires us to water bar, they came up and they'll, they'll come up into a complete inspection of the property, both ahead of time and afterwards. To make sure that all drainages are dealt with according to state law. As far as the water line's concerned, I understand people are concerned about that water line, I think I mentioned right off the bat that we would be willing to do a locate with the city or without the city, and just not need to go on the water line at all, so it's not an issue. Um thirty six inches deep, piss time of year, probably not, it's gonna happen to your water lines, but one way to solve the issue is to put a condition in there that we don't vote, you don't pass water line. Real simple. Uh so addressing the water line issue. As far as developing the property up there, it's zone hillside residential, that's what it's zone. You know, that's, that's what the city is designated for that property. Once again, we would have to buy by all development, that any development plan would have to adhere to all the zoning codes, all the zoning ordinances. You'd be addressing your water issues, your storm drainage, your, all your development codes. So yes, the plan is to develop, I think that's what the property's for, so I would have bought it if we, if we had developed it. And I would like to, any of you, if you have any comments about someone cutting trees on your property, I'd like to see pictures, or I could come. Just say, I got, I'll leave, I'll leave my contact information, and we'll be pulling one to come see it in person, what you're talking about, but I know we haven't been, I know you haven't been big, yeah. None of us have been up on that property, had any trees. Or, all we did was open up an existing roads, I mean, the city told us we need to have a permit, so we need to stop doing that. But the survey work has been ongoing up there, so surveyors cut lines, and they cut a lot of lines, because they're one of, you've seen property lines, they go north, south, east, west. So there probably has been a lot of uh work done, cutting um survey lines open.
Thank you. Continue our close.
Got some options to channel, either close the public portion of the testimony, you can close the public portion leaving a couple of written testimony, and you're ready to
Okay, at this point, I think we will continue the public hearing, waiting for any and all further.
Make sure that's.
Written comments.
I, I can't approve it the way it is right now, with people complaining about property line violations, so I would say at least continue it to give people a chance to submit some more information.
I can do video, if you'd like to see it.
Well, they'll, they'll give you an opportunity to bring it in, we're just gonna, I think.
We're gonna continue the hearing probably, at this point.
There's obviously a lot of issues that need to be addressed.
Absolutely.
And I agree, I think you have to hear all complaints and then have to come back with solutions to those complaints. So I think we're gonna just.
I need to continue it. Well, the next meeting, people should write them. Put all your comments and writings, pretty staff. So we can get all the information in for the next meeting.
Does that mean all stuff that they're doing right now on our property, this is the stop?
Yes. Anything that you, any comment that you wanna make regarding this.
Me?
Anyone? Address any thing I wanna say about this, enlightening, so.
Asking about the people that are doing the cutting and, and making lines now. Is that progress gonna stop until this continues, or are we still gonna have people going around cutting these lines and damaging properties?
I understand, they can't feld trees, but they can access the property however they want to.
As long as they stay on their property.
Yeah.
Hey, quit, quit cutting our trees and uprooting our big trees, it's gonna cause a domino effect, and instead of my house, it's gonna get smashed.
There's some hopefully big trees that I. Address before the next meeting.
Yeah. There's some big trees up there that's got some little big roots that's been ripped out from them, and they are clearly on my property. But that's my number one concern.
Okay, yeah, please put all that in writing, and then if you have photographs, attach it to your written comments.
Yes, sir. Where and what time do we put this, yeah, how long do we have to get this all together?
Well, the next meeting is
So July eighteen, this is the month. Well, and we'll send out a memo, uh that will go out outlining all of the dates. I would give To help prepare you guys better for that decision.
You've got about fourteen days to get everything in. Not enough time?
Yes, sir.
We'll send out a notice to all the parties that have been identified also, um, outlining the dates, the deadlines, so that way you can have it all submitted on.
Any discussion on this?
I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Banducci?
Yeah, yeah.
And just for the record, indicating that it is continued to July eighteenth at seven P M here in the.
Very brief, I'll, this will be continued until. July eighteenth at seven P M. When bringing all the discussion back. All, all of your comments to. Okay, on to the next item. Recreational vehicle discussion.
So this is just following up, um, we've had a couple discussions, um, the city staff has held open house. Regarding, um, what the city councils have cast upon us, you know, to bring to you. About doing a possible development change to allow, um. People to reside or occupy a recreational vehicle on private property. So what's? We kind of provided to you was summary of the survey. So we did a few public gatherings, we did the month, survey monkey. When maybe the summary of the results, we also held an open house. Including this packet is also the kind of a summary of the. Attendance from that, there were seventy-nine people in attendance, um, a good majority, about forty people spoke some of them a few times. We kind of outlined those people for both for it, against it, you know, neutral. A lot of comments, questions. And so what we've spread to you tonight is to open that discussion with you again. And see how you wanna proceed, or if you wish to see with. Our workshop.
Anybody have any ideas? We've all discussed it last time. Do you wanna add anything else to what we discussed? Or how it seemed with this?
And so what we've kind of outlined is those five options, I mean, you. We could talk through with five options, or, you know, we could hold. A more detailed workshop. That's what you wish, but the five options that were presented to, um, you that city council, just to outline with them. What would be necessary if you were to wanna receive a change in the development code?
What's a city council's decision anyway?
Right, you guys will ultimately make the recommendation. Yeah, so the five, um. Technical options are, one, take no action, continue to not permit RV occupancy as identified in the solid development code and continue the code enforcement process. Two, recommend to move forward with a proposed ordinance to amend the solid municipal code to prohibit the occupancy of RV. Three, code enforcement, enforcing existing rules and regulating that line within solid municipal code and solid development code. Move forward, and before move forward with allowing RVs to be occupied, ask temporary housing to include planning commission workshop. To discuss guidelines for RV occupancy on private property. Then move whole city council workshop, and then ultimately have a resolution with attached temporary guidelines for RV occupancy on private property. Or number five. Um, and this is if you guys just decide to recommend a city council to change the development code. Um, if you think of legislative amendment process to our local ordinances. To permit, permit RV occupancy on an active time, place, and manner. Restrictions within the solid development card to, code to include the planning commission workshop to discuss guidelines. The public outreach. City council workshops and the resolution with attached temporary guidelines for RV occupancy on private property. So I'm not sure, did you guys, um, read, you know, the summary of the survey and then also, um, from the open house?
Yes.
And feel free to take any of this one.
Is there anyone here, uh, wanting to comment on? On this item? You know, one, wanna come up and rename and. Add this?
And I am opposed to having people living in RVs on another individual's property. Just because. It ends up looking like. A trashy trailer park. It's one thing to have people moving into an RV. If they're a disabled family member. But it's a whole nother ball of wax, and it's just somebody that. Uh, it's easier to live on ma- a mom and dad's or brother's property and, and just. Yeah. Making a mess. You get trashy old trailers, it's nothing that looks pretty. So. Um, many of the people that I have talked with about this are one hundred percent against it being. Allowed in the city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So with that statement you just covered, I'm Christine Godby, uh. Eight hundred South State Street, Lot one forty-seven, I live in an RV in, uh. Resident, or, uh, so, uh, Timber Valley S K P Park, so, um. I live in a residential trip, uh, residential RV park, so I have lived in a RV for ten years now. And in that statement, you just contradicted yourself because you said, um, it's okay for somebody. Whose parents are, are someone is disabled and that it's okay for them to. Live in an RV on their property, but not for somebody that's just, uh, not. Uh, financially able to, and so they're living in one next door to somebody. Else that hasn't had a RV on their lot, well. How do you make that distinction? And that's where the owner, you know, the, the problem, the problem in this whole issue. Stems from is how do you make that distinction note? We have a lot of problems right now in this whole country, in this city, you know, we have. What, it's like eighty-nine homeless teenagers in our school system. That don't, that are living in cars or living surf, couch surfing, you know? We have a big problem with people that can't afford housing and. Uh, you know, I, I was here at the last workshop. And I listened to both sides, I listened to the people that don't wanna have. An RV parked next to them with a bunch of kids in it that are making a lot of noise, but I also hear the young mother. Who's, uh. Learning, you know, taking classes to be an attorney, she's a paralegal. And she has two kids and can't afford housing anywhere, and she's living, taking care of disabled people in the house. With her two kids in there, in an RV behind their house. And she can't afford housing anywhere, you know, I, I see both sides of the story, you know, and I. I don't know how to make that decision, you know? And I, but I see both sides and I, you know, I feel the heartache for those people, so. I'm in a quandary, you know, when I see this, I don't know how to make that decision. So, that's all.
Brett Hunstaker, nineteen seventy-two Ridgeview Drive in Sullivan. Been living here two years. I'm opposed to this, I really am. Um, without sounding heartless or anything, I, I need to share a few quick, few stories about. Another community which we moved from not too long ago, that tried these same kind of measures. They started out with converting garages into living spaces. Wonderful. It didn't work out. Where are you parking your cars now? Now the cars are on the street. It didn't work out. A lot of the people who moved in, ten percent of, pretty good people overall, the other ninety percent. Destroyed the community, it just didn't work out. Then the motorhomes started showing up, then the trailers started getting parked on lawns. It didn't work out, a fifteen volt house and, uh, amp house and you plug a thirty and fifty amp. RV into it, now you're getting fires. You start dumping black water into the sewer system, and you may have a problem with your beautiful new sewer treatment plant down the road. It is gonna be a happy mix to throw black water sewage into your. Nice bacteria that wants a specific kind of water down there, and it's quite expensive, I don't think we wanna mess with that down there. Uh, see, electrical. Converting garages. People are gonna take an opportunity to, to try and make a buck. Some folks, a large private property are gonna say, I can not only fit one, I can fit two, or three, or four. And the next thing you're, you'll have small entrepreneurs. Um, these entrepreneurs are not going to pay taxes to the city. If you wanna add. Family space now, you have to add to the size of your house, if you don't have four bedrooms or whatever else, you have to have a building permit. You have to have inspections, and then your house is gonna be reassessed and your taxes are gonna go up. That's revenue that goes to the school, to the police, to all the other city services. If there's an RV parked in the yard, you're not gonna see a dime from that. Yet, the children are gonna be at the schools, and your, your police and your fire department are gonna be utilized, and you're not gonna see a nickel in tax revenue. It's just gonna put a bigger burden on the rest of the community. It's really. It, my heart is, goes out to the people of India, I remember the, the gal, uh, is, is the. Legal secretary, wonderful woman, very nice lady. I'm sorry, my heart breaks for you for your situation, but I'm not gonna allow my, my beautiful little community here. That is lifting up and looking better all the time. To start sliding down a slippery slope, and it will happen fast, ladies and gentlemen, it will happen really fast. So, I am, I am adamantly against this, you would be foolhardy to step down this path. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is John Day, I live at eighteen hundred Ridgeview, and, uh. I agree with this gentleman here, I'm adamantly against it, I think there is a solution. But moving an RV across the street from my house and knocking my value of my house down fifty or hundred thousand dollars isn't one of them. I think. Sullivan and driving around, especially the south part of Sullivan, has a lot of, uh, empty property. The city is really concerned about this. Building RV park. You know, for low income people, just like we build apartment buildings. For, uh, section eight, uh, low income folks. Uh, why can't we get that? We have the property here in Sullivan and didn't do that. But, like, uh, this gentleman said here. I, I'm not into RVs being parked in my neighborhood. I just don't think that's right. Uh, I do agree that there's people that need it and we need to do something about it. I'm a retired building contractor, I've had rentals for forty years, and I understand there's a problem right now. But just letting them pile onto your neighbor's lot next door to you is not the answer. Thank you for putting up with me.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment back?
Hey, my name is David Rowell, I live at six eighty-nine Sherwood Drive, um, you know, working federal housing policy. And in agreement with the, the gentleman spoke before, there's an issue of like, how much absorption can be done? So like, Sullivan's not that big a town, we're a lot smaller than Roseburg, and we're a lot smaller than the areas of California that recently burned. There's a huge demand, like, in this area, like, it's a build as an investment property location for all the tech stuff in Oregon, up and down the coast, Washington, California. You're not gonna be able to fundamentally alter either of these. We'll follow them with people you can house, or the, uh, market price of housing by opening up RV style housing, so it's not gonna be a solution that's really effective. Um, but you may end up with the external, externality problems like people were saying. So I would encourage you to pursue some of the other options that were sort of laid out, like whether it's building, you know, section type housing, um. Different sort of things like that, they're more sustainable in the sense of a community perspective. I'm happy to talk later, if folks have questions about housing data.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment, if you've got a housing shortage, if you've got rental shortage, and you build more houses, that's what developments for. Also, I take the opportunity, I'm gonna leave a stack of cards on the back here. Anybody that feels their property's been trashed past someone, feel free to call this number. And either myself or a surveyor, I confirmed with the operator back there. He's got not one tree on that property, so. Probably have survey lines being cut, you may have line trees being cut, which is legal, but. If you have any questions, I would, I'm gonna leave a stack of cards on the back table for I leave. Feel free to call, we'll be down here and address your concerns with the surveyor.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody up here? I made comments?
So would this be in conjunction with the city council then, or is this just a whole separate thing?
Yeah, so you guys ultimately will make a recommendation, so, um. I guess it depends on which direction you're wanting, if you're wanting. Based on the information that you have. Is it something that you want to make code changes in a workshop to kind of hash out like a temporary permit? Is it that you just want to move forward, making a recommendation to the city council? Um, with. Continuing with the codes we have today, making no changes. Then it could be a workshop to determine how to enforce what we have going on today.
That's a recommendation, one, include two and three.
One number two is, is what our city attorney recommended, because in the municipal code, it's not. Black and white, clearly stated, we're in the development code, it clearly states that an RV does not meet, um. The requirements of design standards for a civil family dwelling. So he recommended that it be put into the municipal code for the ordinance, for an ordinance.
And so, so at that moment, we were, it's really not being enforced either, right?
Not currently, no.
Prior, it was complaint driven.
So I guess what Chrissy was, I think, going on. You is, are you wanting a workshop to go over temporary guidelines, or are you wanting, um. To go with an option that just continue with the code enforcement assess?
Or even creating the language, not permitting it in black and white language in municipal code.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Number two, attorney recommends. Attorney's gonna have to write up that terminology.
Yeah, so we would take that component, if that is a recommendation, we would take it back to the city attorney and have that language. We could either bring it back to you, or we could just forward it to the city council with his fervage.
I think sending back here would be better. You might people want to talk right here now.
I'm Vicky Holland. I live at twenty-five seventy-one Parkway. I'm currently dealing with an RV behind my house right now. Somebody living in it. Sure, they're very nice people. There's a small child that runs back and forth through the RV and the dog. He's a marker. And so he hears the kid with my doors window shut. He hears the kid running through that RV. And then all hell breaks loose in my house because there's a dog sounding off about the noise that he doesn't understand. It actually sounds like there's somebody running through my backyard. So when I first complained about this, it's been going on at least since October. So when I waited until January, I thought, you know what? That's enough time. You're not supposed to, you know, that's not what we signed up for. So I complained to the compliance officer. She, I think, is a she, went to the neighbor's house and expressed my complaint. And it was supposed to be anonymous on top of that. And so I'm outside in the backyard with my dog doing yard work. The man's outside with a small child. There's the bad neighbor. How am I the bad neighbor when you can't, you know? Anyway, the frustration is growing immensely. Whoever, however, it was decided to not enforce compliance with what we had in place, I think is incredibly short sighted. If you have something in place, you can't just nilly willy decide, oh, we're not going to follow it. We could all drive fifty down Central City, follow the rules. So, sorry, that's my complaint. I've been living with this for almost, almost a year now. And nothing happens except for the kid runs back and forth and makes my damn dog bark. Sorry.
Thank you.
Jerry Estebrock again. He brought up the concern about the electrical of which didn't cross my mind, but the sewer issue has. You quit those travel trailers, motorhomes onto a lot. Are they going to physically move them to a dump site?
They won't.
They should.
They should, but they won't.
Anyway. Are they, are they going to move that thing every two weeks to empty the the light tapes? Is not everybody, does anybody have a dump site in their yard? I mean, other than the fact that you live in one, I mean, you know.
Christine, I think. Eight hundred South State Street, Lot one forty-seven. I asked that question at the last meeting because I live in an RV and I didn't understand that either. We we have traps and stuff where we have to dump every couple of weeks. So I asked that at the last meeting and the gentleman, one of the gentleman up here explained to me that as of a certain date, and I I didn't know this, that every house built after a certain date has to have an outside trap that you can dump into and but or whatever. I don't know that stuff, but that they can wow, they can empty into like a a no, well, that's what he told me that they and he was a guy that worked that worked on the Hastings Street or one or the other one, but that you they can dump it into like a big bucket or something and then dump it into those things and so that that went on the side of the house. That's how they, he says, that's how they work it now. They don't move their trailers. I think they're just doing it that way.
I I have an external clean out at my house. And there's no way I'm going to get a travel trailer up to that cleanup.
No, you don't have to put the trailer. You just dump it into a.
I don't think you heard that is against the municipal code to have a sewer dump for an RV on your property.
Right.
So peace.
He's gonna kiss the wall. Even gray water, you can't put on your passive here.
Oh, I I I didn't know about. Anyway, that's my concern. Because we only have one place to dump in this house. And that's out of the A O A.
No, you can do it in our.
No, okay, so we got the skip part. But anyway, that's my concern because I don't want it dumped around my house.
Thank you.
Can I just finish up on that black water? I'll just, just so the whole room knows, what happened in our neighborhood is people did run a hose with a power muncher, I think they call them. And they would pump through garden hose to their black water, to their house clean out. And that's how they were dumping black water into the city services. But they weren't so generous with their gray water, which, as you all know, if you, I own an RV, can just smell beyond definition. That hopefully most of the time would dump into the city street or into the larves or whatever. And you had a neighbor that smelled like a Philly goat pie, really. It was, it was bad fast.
Yeah.
Take recommendations and. Add number two. Yes.
So what option number two is recommend to move forward with a proposed ordinance to amend the municipal code to prohibit the occupancy of an RV within the city.
Yes. I make a motion.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Sonos. Commissioner Maloney.
Hi.
Commissioner Hogshead.
Hi.
Commissioner Van Dujt.
Hi.
Sheridson.
Yes. And I'll be forwarding to the attorney and.
Yeah, so we're recording with the city attorney and we're drafting ordinance that will be ready for the city council. John, let's kind of go over this for you. Each each planning permission meeting part of your packet, we do an activity report. Kind of addresses everything that we have going on with main development, any building worksheets that we've done, maybe sections, things that we are involved in for all the three of you ask questions. So you are aware of kind of what's going on. And there's probably more than we're. But it's a good time to ask questions, if you have questions on what's going on.
Okay, now we open the whole meeting up for a bullet comment. Okay. There's no public here. Commissioner, comments on anything? That's good. That case.
They are entered.
Meeting adjourned at eight fifteen P M.